We have to order. And we stand.
Oh.
The USO Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with roll call.
Sir.
Here.
Benson.
Here.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Iman.
Here.
Mojer.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
City Manager's Report.
Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission and public, just a few things to go over with you this evening. As a reminder, on the agenda is our new mission statement, which is to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create every opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. And with that, you have in front of you, we have laminated our strategic plan, so you have that at your convenience to use while you're here, and if you'd like a digital or other copies, we can get you one. Also, underneath that, you have some information on the Chan Gurnee Municipal Airport Apron Expansion Project, so you have that there. We did have a public hearing at 5:30 about the project. If you would like to review the materials and make any comments, on the back of this pamphlet, there's some information as to how you can do that by sending them to KLJ, who is our environmental planner. Also, for more information, you can speak with Dave Mingo regarding that project. On Wednesday at 5 o'clock, you're all invited to attend a reception for the candidates that will be, we will be, have interviewed for the library director position, so if you're interested in that, Kline has notified the press that there may be a quorum for that. Want to let everyone know, with all the water we're dealing with, we do not deal with water on people's properties or water in people's basements, so we certainly can give folks some ideas or, you know, direct them to places that can help them, but we, our city staff personally does not help with that situation. So if you're in that situation, which I know a lot of people are, you know, we certainly are empathetic, we have a lot of water situations with our own city property that we're dealing with, but we'll help point people in the right direction, but that's not something that we send crews out to assist with. Also, wanted to visit with you all a little bit about the hiring process. Later on this evening, you'll be considering my appointment for interim police chief, and I want to talk to you a little bit about the scheduling of that process once we have our interim. So today, we've sent, I've sent out letters to some citizens to serve on a citizens committee to help with that process. We will have a number of things involved in that process. One will be a public reception of candidates that are selected for interviews. Another will be a Q and A with the Police Department and Dispatch Department. Another will be a Q and A where all of you will be welcome to attend, all commissioners, and we'll have a commission and city staff Q and A to be involved with those candidates. Also, a public reception, so of course you'll be invited to that as well, and the public can come and meet those candidates. Once finalists are selected, I will then be asking the city commission to select amongst yourself a couple people to help me interview and talk with the finalists for that process. So I'll send you out soon, probably yet this week, the schedule, proposed schedule, and we'll keep the media and the public informed as we move ahead with that process. But it is a big decision, it's a very public position, so taking a few more steps than we would some of our other department head positions, but I think it'd be best to make sure that we have the right fit for our community. Happy to stand for questions. Also, want to mention that Officer Caitlin is here this evening to help us out on the rainy, rainy Monday night.
Does anyone from the commission have any questions? I would add, with the plentiful rain, it's meant we've had bountiful lawns, and so I've had several people express to me their appreciation for the transfer station being open to allow yard waste to be dumped off at any time. One person even said, "That's the greatest thing the city's ever done." So, there you go. Thank you, Adam, and all your staff. And with that, now's the time for public appearances. If there's anyone from the audience or the commission who has something they wish to address the commission about that is not on the agenda, now's the time to step to the podium and address us. All right, moving on, we'll look at the consent agenda. Number one is to establish July 9th, 2018, as the date for the public hearing on the request for a special events retail on-sale malt beverage license for September 15th, 2018, for Heritage Home, Inc. Number two is a peddler's license application recommending approval of this application for a peddler's license for Southwestern Advantage for one person to go house to house to sell educational books. Number three is declaring June 27th, 2018, as a possible quorum event during the meet and greet reception for library director candidates, during which there'll be no official commission action.
Can we pull out number two, please?
We may. So...
Move the consent agenda.
Okay. We have a first.
Pull it out, or do we consent?
We pulled out number two, but we don't need a second on that, correct?
So you've moved to approve the consent agenda absent number two?
Correct.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Does anyone on the commission have any questions? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission? Roll call, or excuse me, voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion approved. And number two, which is the peddler's license, what is your pleasure?
So first, city manager, can you give us a little bit of insight into what the public experienced last year, and I suppose your staff as well, what they experienced with having Southwestern Advantage in our community?
Yeah, so that's the vendor where we had some complaints last year from folks regarding some of their sales practices, I guess for lack of a better, lack of better way to, to just express that. Some concern that they were, folks that were there were maybe a little pushy or asking questions, maybe not that were meant to, to make people uncomfortable, but made people uncomfortable just based on, you know, the fact they're asking about, you know, do you have kids in the house, kind of what age are they, or asking people in the neighborhood about others, neighbors, things like that. So we did talk about this at staff because I thought that this might be an area of concern. This is not the same, it's the same company of the books that were sold last year, not the same individuals, so this is, I believe, not even a group of individuals, it was just one individual this year, so, you know, it's the commission's pleasure whether they want to approve or deny that request.
So as I understand it, though, this is the same company, the same company that applied last year, different representative, though, and, and I know that Harrisburg had the same process that they went through on an annual basis with this same company and individual from last year. But again, my understanding is same company, but a different individual.
These are different people than last year, so yes, same company, different people, so we don't know anything about these particular individuals, other than, you know, they've provided the proper paperwork and that type of thing.
And so last year, you took it upon yourself rightfully to go ahead and revoke their ability to go house to house in our community?
Correct. The first thing we did is we talked to them and warned them and said, "Hey, you know, folks are feeling uncomfortable about the questions that you're asking," and, you know, we had the police officers talk to them about, you know, "When you're doing this, you have to, first of all, you know, make sure that you're not going, you know, not going where you're not invited," and this type of thing, and, and they were warned first, and then we received another complaint, and at that point, we actually did administratively revoke their perm, or their license, and the Police Department informed them of that, or it could have been Ross, too, I can't remember, but I think maybe Ross in conjunction with the Police Department, and the police sat down with, I believe, the, the individual, kind of the, I don't want to say manager, but the lead on that, as well as with the city attorney, I believe, and they talked about, you know, what the issues were and why, and my understanding is everybody understood, and, but they didn't return back into the community for selling, you know, we revoked it for the period of the permit, which is one year.
And then to also have given them the opportunity that they could appeal that decision, they could come in front of us as a commission and...
Yes, we told them that, but I don't remember if they did that, I don't recall that, I don't think they did. I think they came and talked to some individuals and talked to me individually, they sat down with me and had a conversation with me, and I just said, "No, I'm not comfortable at this time to do that," so...
So if we tonight deny this application, can they have the same opportunity to either come in front of us individually or your staff, just so we can understand their methods better, and whether or not it's a good fit?
That's probably a better question for Ross. I don't think so, because they're, they just, they never had the permit, so...
Yeah, this, you guys just have the right to deny the application. If they're unhappy with it, they could potentially bring it to the courts.
But they've already paid a fee?
No, their fee would be returned to them if they're denied.
I would move to, unless anybody else has any...
I just have a question. So you talked to kind of their manager, it, I guess my question is, to be better informed, was this a company policy this individual was following, or were they kind of expressed the same concern when you talked to them?
Well, they were part, they were one, they were involved in it, so a lot of times these types of companies hire student workers, and sometimes the student workers are not from the Midwest, and sometimes they're not even from, you know, our, our country, and this was the case last year, and I think there was some misunderstanding about what people's comfort level is, so they were a part of making maybe some decisions or asking some questions that, you know, maybe were too forward, and I don't remember the gentleman's name, but he had thought that some was maybe a language misunderstanding, and I agreed with that the first time, I agree with that, but once it's explained and discussed, and our police were real cordial with them, and, you know, took a lot of time with them, then once somebody complains on the second time, then I'm not biting again. So my experience, too, with these types of companies is year to year, it's different folk, so I don't anticipate that this person would, the person asking for the permit today would even be at all connected to the other people, but, you know, I can't guarantee that it will be a positive experience, just like with any peddler's license, I don't know until we get complaints.
I think it'd be unfortunate, especially this time of year, when our police force is experiencing what they're experiencing now, they've already got their hands full. I certainly wouldn't want to burden them with additional complaints like what they had to go through last year. I think that would be an unfortunate thing to ask of them.
I, I guess my only comment was, one person does not a company make, but you shouldn't judge a whole company just by the acts of one person. I think everybody deserves a chance.
I think if you just Google "Southwestern Advantage," you can see pretty clearly what their sales practices are, and what makes it easy for, in my opinion, for folks to step in as a salesperson is because they are given the manual on how to sell books, and it's something that, in theory, apparently, anybody with the will, whether you're a citizen or not, can go out to the community and you can follow the handbook, and here you go, this is how you sell books.
They've done business in our community for a number of years, haven't they?
I believe so, I think every year since I've been here, every summer.
So was last year the first time you received complaints, or had you received complaints in the past?
I haven't received complaints in the past, I don't know, Al, if you guys have, but, you know, I, I think some people, folks don't like being approached, period, so I've gotten complaints about other vendors, but just generally like, hey, can people come up to the door and be selling us stuff, not really specific. This, and this, but this particular one last year, we did get a number of complaints, three, four complaints.
Yes, I'd like to hear more from them before I vote for this. I've studied this and, and read reviews that I didn't like, you know, and it just doesn't feel right, seem right, so I'm gonna, gonna vote against it.
I guess one of my concerns, if this was an individual, that there was a cultural or language barrier, you know, I think we have to allow some room for them to learn and grow, and I think this company's done business here for a long time, and last year was the first time we had problems with them, so I would be comfortable giving them another shot before I decline the request. Does anyone else have any comments?
I agree, I think that one year, and if we only had three or four, you know that we don't want any at all, but that's, could have just been a one-year deal if they'd been here in years past, so I would move the consent, or I will move the peddler license application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? Roll call, or excuse me, does the public have any questions or input on this for the commission? All right, roll call.
Hoffman.
No.
Mybaum.
No.
Minor.
Aye.
Mojer.
Aye.
Sardar.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes. Item number 200, old business, consideration of memorandum number 18-131 and resolution number 18-29 for the public hearing on the special assessment role for noxious vegetation and tree trimming. And by my math, this is, this affects 14 properties and would be an assessment of $10,003.55 between those properties. What is your pleasure?
I move the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone on the commission have questions? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission on this matter? Roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mojer.
Aye.
Sardar.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes. Item number 200, old business, consideration of memorandum number 18-128 regarding the request for a special events malt beverage on-sale retailer's license and a special on-sale wine retailer's license for July 21st, 2018, from the center. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone on the commission have questions? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission on this matter? Roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mojer. Aye.
Sardar.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Ferdig. Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes. Item number 200, old business, consideration of memorandum number 18-128 regarding the request for a special events malt beverage on-sale retailer's license and a special on-sale wine retailer's license for July 21st, 2018, from the center. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone on the commission have any questions? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission on this matter? Roll call.
Minor. Aye.
Mojer.
Aye.
Sardar.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes. Number 300, old business, consideration of memorandum number 18-129 regarding the request for a special events malt beverage on-sale retailer's license and a special on-sale wine retailer's license for July 28th, from the center. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone on the commission have any questions? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission on this matter? Roll call.
Mojer.
Aye.
Sardar.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes. Number 400, old business, is a public hearing and second reading regarding the sales tax amendment ordinance number 1,009. What is your pleasure?
I move the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Amy, can we have you explain this ordinance amendment for the public, please?
Sure. So the Second Penny Sales Tax Ordinance, as you know, describes certain things by which we can use the Second Penny for, and we're looking to amend it to include the language of street maintenance and operations, so that we're able to utilize that Second Penny for street maintenance and operations. And really, what that will do is allow us to be able to budget in the capital fund for potential aquatics facility, if that should come forward. As you know, we have right now in the budget, budget, $2 million long-term from the Second Penny to go into the aquatics facility or towards the aquatics facility. So in order to do that, we need to open up the Second Penny a little bit broader, and by opening up to street maintenance and operations, we can actually then be allowed to budget, pay for more of that with the general fund and budget accordingly. So it sounds a little bit confusing, but it's much like what we did with the Yankton Road Tax, where we, you know, not directly using that funds for the roads, we're not directly using those funds for the streets, but rather using Second Penny funds for street maintenance and operation that would be typically used for, out of the CIP, and then being able to utilize CIP funds for the aquatics facility project. So that's what that ordinance essentially does.
Thank you, Amy, for that explanation. Does anyone on the commission have any questions on this item? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission? Either of you, please step to the stand, state your name and address.
Richard Erickson at 3011 Mulligan Drive. My question, I guess, is to you, Al, how much does that Second Penny bring into us, dollar-wise, on an estimate, if you don't know how to correct the amount?
I believe it's almost $4 million now a year, annually.
Just on the Second Penny?
Yep.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Leick, and I want to know how long are we going to have the Extra Penny CIO Tax forever, ever, amen, or aren't we?
You're asking if this will always be this way, or if they...
I mean, how long are you going to have it? Are you going to have it for one year, two years, or forever?
Well, we've had the Second Penny for, Al, do you know when the state allowed us that? So 20, 25 years, Charlie is saying, so that should stay, we hope that stays in place, otherwise, we've got a lot more to talk about.
I don't, I'm wondering how, you know, the governor wanted another half cent. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd take another half cent, but...
Now, the Second Penny was originally used to pay our part of the Summit Activities Center, and that's, it was restricted or limited, and I, my question, which Nathan went too fast, I wasn't quick enough to get my hand up, is, as opposed to singling out street maintenance and/or street operations, what we really, I thought, were looking for was a way to tap into that Second Penny for the swimming pool, so is there another way to word that, or is our intent to take what we would take out of the general fund for streets, maintenance and operation, and direct that to the pool?
Well, we, we talked about, if I may, Mayor, we talked about wording it more specifically, and then, you know, what we really landed on is the fact that we may not need to, depending upon where revenues come in, maybe we don't need to take the entire $2 million, if that's what the commission settles on, you know, maybe we will be able to budget some of that out of the capital improvement fund as we normally did, so we may or may not have to utilize some or all, or, or any. If revenue's coming well, we won't, but that gives us a little flexibility, and to keep in mind, the commission can change the language in this ordinance, you know, as time goes on or from time to time.
Does anyone, does anyone else on the commission have a question about this item? All right, roll call.
Sardar.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mojer.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes. New business, number one, consideration of memorandum number 18-133 regarding the 2018 through 19 annual supply of petroleum and transport tank wagon petroleum products. What is your pleasure?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does the commission have any questions about this item? Does the public wish to address the commission about this item? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mojer.
Aye.
Sardar.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes. Number two, under new business, consideration of memorandum 18-134 regarding a bid award for the Highway 50 sidewalk project from Paddle Wheel Drive to Ferdig Avenue. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can Amy or Adam perhaps address, or introduce this item for the public?
Sure, I'll let Adam do that.
As part of the East Highway 50 project that took place the last two years, part of the agreement with the DOT was that the city would install sidewalk along the south side of the project, as described, from Paddle Wheel Drive to Ferdig Avenue, and there was reimbursement from the DOT for part of this project as well, so that's what this is about.
Does anyone from the commission have questions about this item? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission? Roll call.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Sardar.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Sardar.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Ferdig.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Aye.
Mojer.
Aye.
Sardar.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes. Number two, under new business, consideration of memorandum 18-134 regarding a bid award for the Highway 50 sidewalk project from Paddle Wheel Drive to Ferdig Avenue. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can Amy or Adam perhaps address, or introduce this item for the public?
Sure, I'll let Adam do that.
As part of the East Highway 50 project that took place the last two years, part of the agreement with the DOT was that the city would install sidewalk along the south side of the project, as described, from Paddle Wheel Drive to Ferdig Avenue, and there was reimbursement from the DOT for part of this project as well, so that's what this is about.
Does anyone from the commission have questions about this item? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission before we move on? Gino.
Commission, thank you. I want to thank city attorney for putting in the time and effort, because I did a lot of research on this, and it is, it's all over the board with this stuff. I do have a couple questions after reading through that, so with this, the TNC basically is taking all the responsibility of the checks and background checks and all that stuff, checks and all that stuff, and so it frees up the city and the city offices don't have to worry about that regulatory function anymore, right?
Correct, we just get reports from them on a quarterly basis as to who's approved, who's supposed to be driving.
Okay.
We do have the ability to pull drivers from that list if they're not complying with our local laws.
Gino, before you proceed, can we have you introduce yourself for the viewing audience?
Sorry. My name is Gene Fuller. I work and manage the landing down at 104 Capital. And my interest in this is really the, the need in the city to help with the transportation from the lake and from events and from downtown for folks, just an antidote. So, my research in this, when Lyft became available in South Dakota, the state passed an ordinance that allowed Lyft to operate. And so, how that has worked is wherever the Lyft ride terminates, Lyft has put back the sales tax from that to the community where the Lyft ride had terminated. So, pretty much outside of any area that has an existing ordinance, Lyft can just operate freely. So, if you're in the county, you can run a Lyft ride and you don't have to worry about it, because they don't have a, a transportation ordinance that's in there. And so, what I saw with ordinance here, it was, didn't give the ability of drivers to really work in the system that Lyft or Uber provides for them. So, doing some research, I worked and had a meeting with Ross at one time to really work and try and understand what this is and what's working for other communities. So, what makes it work so well in Sioux Falls? What makes it work so well in Rapid City? And essentially, Lyft has come up with a template, basically, that really helps give the city the teeth they need to be able to work with the transportation network company and then makes it an easy barrier for drivers to get in. And so, you know, it really is helpful to have that, because say Vermillion, you know, the Vermillion Lyft won't even answer the phone for, for them because of how their, their ordinance is set up, because it's not appropriate for the drivers, and they think that, yeah, they just won't even work with them because of the way that they have their transportation network set up. And from doing the research, the way that this is set up, it, you need a good working relationship with those transportation network companies, because it gives the ability of the, the city and law enforcement to be able to track that. And one of the interesting things that doesn't happen with regular cabs, but because of the technology, you're, the, the drivers are tracked everywhere. It's GPSed, and so, if there's a complaint, if there's anything, law enforcement has the ability to go directly to Lyft and pull those records and can see exactly the timing, the routes, all that stuff that happened with them, that you don't have with regular cab services that are out there. So, there's a lot of pluses with how these operations work. And also gives the Lyft the ability to target your market. So, if you, Riverboat Days, things like that, they can send out things into the state and do spiffs for drivers to come down here and drive from Sioux Falls and things like that. So, I get, I signed up and I did a couple test drives here in Yankton to see what the market is. I live in Vermillion, so technically how the ordinance works, I was doing most of my rides in Vermillion, but it's very onerous to get your license over there. So, in doing that, I just realized that, you know, the need that you have to have here and the need that's there is, is, is around. There's people that are waiting all the time for it, and I heard again and again and again from people that I'm glad that this service is coming, it's available, because I wouldn't go out before, because I can't guarantee a safe ride home, or that I'll be able to get picked up. You know, young professionals don't want to jeopardize their licenses, they don't want to jeopardize their jobs, and so, in lieu of going out or going to a meal or going out to the lake and worrying about coming back, they're just not participating in the community, and they're just not spending those dollars out in the restaurants and out at the theaters and things like that. So, it's helpful. I guess the other question I had is in there, under the vehicle part, the Class II misdemeanor for the state ordinance in there, what does that really entail? That has to do with the...
So, that's basically in keeping with what we had before. It's just identifying whether any, any individual driver has violations beyond just a traffic violation of any significance for a seven-year period, or traffic violations within the last three years.
Actually, I was talking about the...
Take me where you're at.
Sorry, vehicle repair and maintenance according to the state ordinance. So, basically, the way I was reading that, it says if you're not doing your self-inspection and you, vehicle is not in repair, then you actually will get, get cited and then you'll automatically get pulled from the TNC network.
Right, that's correct. So, if, if you've got a vehicle that you've allowed to fall into disrepair and you're picked up by law enforcement, you can get an additional charge beyond just your fix-it ticket, because you're transporting people under this TNC network license, and your car is taken off the road. The only way your car is allowed back on the road is if you bring in an inspection from a, from an ASE certified mechanic that signs off on the roadworthiness of the vehicle using the city's already available form, and then your vehicle can be used again. If you are picked up for driving a vehicle for this purpose, when your vehicle's been taken off the road, you get a lifetime ban, and Lyft's staff are willing to honor that ban. So, if we have people that aren't doing what they're supposed to do, we have some pretty good teeth in this ordinance to keep everybody safe.
That's awesome. And then, when speaking with Lyft, the area that is basically just the city limits is what that's concerning for this?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to address the commission on this item? All right, we will move on to item number four, under New Business, consideration of memorandum 18-130 regarding a funding request from Kramer Kenyon Heritage Home. And they are requesting $5,000 for some repairs. Is there someone here from, okay? First of all, do I have a, a motion on this item?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the commission? Ma'am, if you could step to the podium and address the commission, maybe tell us a little bit about this project and why you need the funding?
My name is Rachel Cure, excuse me, and I'm president of the Board of Directors in the Kramer Kenyon Home. We had an issue last fall when we started the boiler and ended up with some damage to one of the radiator, one of the radiators was cracked, and so, totally unusable, water had backed up into the system. And so, we managed to keep it going through the winter, but there was an inspection of the boiler, oh, about a month ago, and we were informed that basically, we shouldn't be using it again. We should not try to start it for, for this winter. And so, that is, our main focus is to have enough funds, and I believe you all should have copies of the bid that we received, for a new system that will not only replace the boiler, but will also replace the furnace in the living quarters, and new air conditioning for both the living quarters and the house itself. The house has never, never been air-conditioned. So, with, that would be a big help for our tourists in the summertime. And we also would like to paint the house, particularly the east side, because the sun has done a lot of damage. It's the east side of the house particularly is, needs, desperately needs to be painted, but the, the rest of the house also is due for a paint job. So, that basically is what, what we're requesting the funds for.
Rachel, can you also give us a quick summary of the home and its history, also, you know, its impact on the community?
Okay. The house was built in the 1880s by a man, by Judge Teller, who was here in Yankton for a while, was involved in Dakota Territory and the statehood movement at that time. Family by the name of Nelson Kramer came from New York, and they purchased the house from Judge Teller, lived in the house until Mr. Kramer died, I believe, in 1929. And the house was inherited by his great niece, and her name was Ada Clark. She and her daughter and son-in-law, the Kenyons, moved to Yankton at that time then, and they lived in the house until Mr. Kenyon passed away in 1971, I believe. And so, the house has been actually occupied by only two families in its 100 and some odd year history. A committee was formed in the early 70s and incorporated as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and purchased the house. And since about 1976, it has been open to the public for tours. The furniture is basically what the Kramers and the Kenyons bought with them. There is one bedroom that is furnished with the bedroom furniture of Dr. Joseph Ward. They have loaned the furniture to the house for the family, for people here in Yankton to, to remember the history of Dr. Ward here in Yankton. And so, we're open for tours Memorial Day through Labor Day. We're also open for private parties, weddings, you know, all sorts of various things that we do at the house. And it's just, it's a great, great piece of architecture that we hope we can keep going for years and years.
Can you tell us a little bit about the fundraising efforts that you've already got underway?
Okay, we, well, we started just, you know, word-of-mouth fundraising about the first week in June. We have approximately $9,000 already that, and we have sent out letters last week to a lot of our supporters to also raise money for this project. So, we're hoping to be able to get the, the new furnace and everything in, hopefully in August, no later than September.
Does the commission have any other questions? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission on this item? So, Amy, you made the motion, right? What was the dollar amount that you were proposing? And where were you suggesting we take it from? I don't know if that's going to cover it.
Commissioner, Mayor, would you like some suggestions? So, in looking at this, you know, the Kramer Kenyon Heritage Home, and I would just say that, that's really, it's really an antique home, because it's not really restored, it's all...
No, it's all original.
Yeah, and if you haven't ever been there, look at the fireplace. That's, to me, that, the fireplace, that's what's stuck in my mind. Anyway, should the commission choose to fund this, you could do a couple of things. This is to, to us, to me, truly promotional tourist-type attraction. Certainly, we enjoy it here in Yankton, but it is something really neat for tourism. So, to me, BBB would be appropriate. However, as you know, we do have a, and we have a balance in BBB right now. You could also take it out of, you know, contingency, or you could assign it to a department, and we may have to supplement if we don't have enough funds. But to me, it is truly a promotional-type expenditure, and it's, they're not requesting a whole lot of money.
It makes sense to me to do the BBB as well, so would I amend my motion to say that? I'd like to amend my emotion, my motion, please, to take $5,000 from the BBB to help the Kramer Kenyon Home with their preservation.
Did you make the second, Charlie?
I did, and I'm happy to do it again.
Okay.
So, I have one more question I just thought of. So, if the, it's actually owned by the nonprofit, the, actually, the title is in the, for instance, if this Kramer Kenyon would sell tomorrow, where would the money go? I'm just curious for that question, is the actual ownership is titled and...
The actual ownership is titled Heritage Home Incorporated.
And who is...
Also, also known as Kramer Kenyon Heritage Home. That question has never come up, to the best of my knowledge. It's just something, you know, we hope to be able to keep it forever.
So, that, that corporation is a 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
All right, we have a, an amendment on the table, so a vote yes would be to approve the amendment clarifying the amount and where it will be taken from. So, Al, if you could please do roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Now, can we get a first and a second to approve the motion as amended?
You already have your motions, all you have to do is vote now.
Okay. So, roll call.
Hoffner.
Aye.
Mybaum?
Sorry, we're, this is the main, all right, yes.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Firdig. Gross. Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Rachel. Number five, under New Business, is consideration of memorandum 18-132 and resolution 18-39 regarding a bid award for a heated joint seal machine. Amy, maybe you can share the stat, or the recommendation from staff on this one?
Sure, the recommendation to, from staff is to approve the bid award, and if you have questions about that machine and what it does, those would be best answered by our city Public Works Director. It's Mr. Adam Haberman, everybody.
Thank you. This is the machine that puts the tar in the cracks in the streets, heats the joint sealant material up, and it comes out a hose that's placed into the cracks in the streets, and it seals the streets up.
Does the commission have any questions for Adam? Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Number six, under New Business, consideration of memorandum 18-137 and resolution 18-40 regarding a request by the Meridian District for special events parking to take place during crazy days on July 14th, 2018. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone on the commission have any questions? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Number seven, under New Business, consideration of memorandum 18-136 and resolution 18-41 regarding a request by Pathways for a special events parking ordinance to be in place during the Pathways Point 5K on July 13th, 2018. What is your pleasure?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone on the commission have questions about this item? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Number eight, under New Business, is consideration of memorandum 18-138 regarding camping in Riverside Park during Pathways Shelter for the Homeless event on August 11th through 12th, 2018. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone on the commission have questions about this item? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Number nine, under New Business, is a commission orientation and refresher hosted by... Number nine under new business is a commission orientation and refresher hosted by Ross Denner.
Try to be quick. This is just, you guys have all been through this drill, some of you a number of times, but this is always good, helpful reminder, advice to keep all of us collectively out of trouble. So I guess we'll just go right down the list here. As a general rule, you as commissioners should communicate with your constituents and other interested persons prior to taking any official action. However, there are some limitations in that regard, and particularly, we're talking about what we refer to as quasi-judicial matters, where you guys, as a body, are sitting in judgment over, over specific requests by a member of the public, or a, an organization, or a group that's asking for something from the city that you have the discretion to say yes or no to, and it does not affect the public at large. There's a list here of things that will regularly come before you. This might not be exhaustive, so if there's a question, feel free to ask. But it would be things like conditional use permits, variances, petitions to vacate or open rights of ways, license applications, that would be alcohol licenses, dance peddler's licenses, mobile home parks, taxi cabs, et cetera. Resolutions of necessity for special assessments, alleyways and street assessments, things of that nature. Awards of bids, that is quasi-judicial, and requests for tax abatements. So those particular issues, please do not talk with one side or the other with respect to these issues, except in this meeting in front of the public. People will tend to want to approach you, just very politely direct them to come to the meeting to share their concerns or wishes. If they hand you something, just say thank you very much, bring it to the meeting, or if they insist that you take it, suggest that you will make copies and hand it to the other commissioners, and that it be discussed at the time of the public meeting. That'll keep you guys out of trouble. It's just better that those matters be dealt with. The law requires that those matters be dealt with at the hearing before this body, before the public. As it relates to public records, the general rule under South Dakota law is that records are open to the public and available for inspection. However, after the statute sets forth the general rule, there's about 1,000 exceptions that are put out there that take things off of the public record list. So things that may come into your possession as commissioners, it's a good reminder that any medical records, personnel information, employment applications, things of that nature are not public records. So if people ask you for them, just know that you cannot share those things. Oftentimes, these things are handed to you or shared with you in executive session, so I think it's kind of obvious. A lot of those things are not shareable with the public, but to the extent you have them, just be aware of it. Attorney-client communications, I share things with you guys fairly routinely that are going on from an attorney-client relationship perspective. That is all work product or attorney-client privilege, and I would strongly request that you keep that stuff confidential. If we, if it's shared with anybody in the public, we lose the attorney-client privilege for all of you and for the community. So that's an important privilege, let's keep it intact. Don't share that stuff with the public. Confidential criminal justice information, other than date, time, and general location or subject matters of police calls, that type of information is, you know, the police reports themselves are typically not public. And the list goes on, I don't need to regurgitate everything that's here, just, you know, that's kind of the ones that you may come into contact with more often than not. But if there's a question as to whether it's a public record, call me, I'll work through it with you. Don't reveal comments communicated to or from your attorney. That makes obvious sense, attorney-client privilege. Any comments made to or from other commissioners when made in executive session, that's the one type where we have the ability to communicate openly over things of significant importance to the community, personnel matters, potentially litigation matters, it's real important that we keep that stuff confidential. The public has a right to attend every official meeting of the commission. However, what constitutes an official meeting can sometimes be problematic. Obviously, when we're in this group, it's in front of the public, it's an official meeting. However, we can create accidentally an official meeting. If you find yourself at a place out in public where there are five of you present, do not talk to each other if you can avoid it, because you don't want to create the perception of a public meeting. Don't talk about public business. Talk about the weather if you talk to each other at all. If there's not a quorum, that's okay. An executive session is limited in scope. You guys all know kind of where the line is, I try very hard to keep you on the, on point, but just remember, we cannot talk about things other than this limited list, which is employee matters, proposed or pending litigation, contractual matters, preparing for or negotiating with employee representatives on labor issues, and marketing or pricing strategies of a city-owned business when public discussion may be harmful to the competitive position of the business. That'd be discussions involving our golf course, potentially the Summit Center is, can be viewed as a, as a public business. So just bear in mind, we have a limited scope of what we can talk about behind closed doors. We do not deliberate, we do not vote in executive session. The public cannot attend a legal executive session. Who gets to? The city manager and the city attorney and finance officer at the discretion of this group. Any other city employee may attend at the discretion of the board as requested by the city manager. As a general rule, you should participate in the deliberation at a meeting and then vote on items, but do not debate or vote when there is not a quorum present. Usually, that's kind of obvious, because the meeting will be brought to an end. If there's improper public notice, we have a pretty good system in place, I don't think I've ever been in a situation where something has been taken off the agenda because it hasn't been properly public noticed, but there's a process we have to go through. If there's improper public notice of an item in question that has been... Okay, so, I'm sorry. Public notice requires notification of the actual meeting, it also requires publication of the actual item, which is on the agenda. So that basically means, if it's not on the agenda, we don't talk about it. If something is brought up for public discussion at the, at the portion where people can come in and talk about things not on the agenda, we can hear about it. If you want to talk about it, that's okay, we'll add it to the next meeting agenda, that's when we'll talk about it, okay? If there is a conflict of interest, you cannot debate, discuss, or vote on that matter. I have tried very hard to lay out step-by-step kind of evaluation tools for you here. Under state statute, you cannot vote if you have a direct pecuniary interest, meaning it affects you directly financially, personally. Or if two-thirds of this board have decided that you have a conflict of interest. So you guys can, someone can make a motion, and it can be seconded, and then you guys can all vote that a particular commissioner has a conflict on a particular issue. Aside from that, case law dictates when you can vote, which would apply to what we call quasi-judicial proceedings, and that's, that's constitutional due process law. That basically means, if, on a quasi-judicial matter, so that you have a neutral decision-maker deciding for these individuals or this organization, a matter that's specific to them, to obtain a neutral decision-maker, no board member can have an indirect pecuniary interest. That would be something that financially benefits someone closely tied to you, a spouse or a, a friend, a family member, like a child or a parent or something like that, a direct personal interest. That's, if it benefits you or a blood relative or a close friend in a non-financial way, but a matter of great importance. So I put an example in there, like a case of a commissioner's mother being in a nursing home, subject to a zoning issue. Well, that, that's obviously not directly affecting any of you, but it's important to your family, so therefore, it might be important to you. Or an indirect personal interest, that would be like, let's say it's something affecting your local church that you're a member of, so you, you don't want to, you know, the perception is you might do something that favors your church, you're in a position where you might, you're not neutral because you might support your organization's request for whatever is coming before this board, and, and that affects consti, the constitutional rights of the person who is making a request, that doesn't affect the public at large. Also, there is this rule that basically says you cannot vote if you have an unalterably closed mind on matters critical to the disposition of the matter that you are voting on. That's that rule that says you cannot truly make up your mind before you have the conversation with this board. So in order to keep yourself out of trouble, don't go out and publicly say, I'm gonna, when that issue comes up, I'm gonna vote this way, because the discussion hasn't taken place yet. You can tell people how you feel about things, but do not commit to voting before you, you have your discussion. That make sense? As a general rule, you may talk with your, your fellow commissioners about any topic outside of a meeting, but do not talk to other commissioners about city business if there's a quorum present and it's not in a publicly noticed meeting. Do not agree to swap votes, there's no, no horse trading on issues before this group. And like I said, don't indicate that your vote is unchangeable. That should only occur after the deliberation has occurred in a public meeting. I put in some social media guidelines for you to keep you guys out of trouble for the reason that oftentimes, social media posts could be viewed as public meetings. It's not a wise idea to comment on each other's social media pages other than to say, your kids are cute and I like your kitty, you know what I mean? Don't discuss issues of public importance on social media because you can accidentally create a public meeting. There is now law on the books that indicates things like emails and social media postings fall under that constitute a public meeting if you have a quorum that are communicating with each other. Do not post confidential information. I would recommend that you utilize a disclaimer on your social media pages that indicates that if you are making opinionated statements of public interest, and you're not just posting about your children or your pets, that you speak for yourself and not for the city. You guys are considered officers of this community, and there's a perception that when you speak, you speak for the community, and that can have ramifications from a legal standpoint. So to the extent you're making public comments, you know, political comments, talking about public policy or something, just make it clear you speak for yourself. Politely rebuff comments and lobbying efforts on any type of quasi-judicial issue. And consider abstaining from voting on any quasi-judicial issue involving those who are considered close friends or potentially even Facebook friends. I know that that can be impossible, and we have, you know, sometimes hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of friends that we've collected on social media, but it can potentially get you in some trouble. So one thing that I've recommended is that if you're, if you're an avid social media user, maybe have a public site where everybody can be your friend, and, you know, that might be for campaigning and things, and then you have your personal one, and those are really your friends, and you pare it down to the people that you really know and socialize with, just to kind of help keep yourself out of trouble. Duties of the city manager, this is kind of important to know where the line is. The city manager enforces all city ordinances. She supervises the administration of city affairs, she prepares the agenda for the, for this body with the help of the finance officer. She appraises the body of the city's finances, and it's her job to submit an annual budget prior to August 1st of each year, and to perform and enforce the terms of all contracts and franchises of which the city is a party. She signs all warrants legally approved by the body for the payment of money. All contracts over $200 must be approved by the body. It's her job to prepare and introduce and discuss all ordinances and resolutions, and to appoint and remove all officers and employees, or to do the same through the delegation of the department head, excepting only Al, myself, and the library board. That's important to know what she does, because if you cross the line and you try to direct employees, it's actually a crime, and conviction could get you removed from office. So Amy is, carries out your will. Trust Amy. You guys have control over who the city manager is, but it's her job to enforce all the rules and, and keep things humming along the way. It should be... The duties of the commission, by contrast, individually or as a body, are, you have the power, the ability to inquire of city employees due to the restrictions that I've just told you about in SDCL 91016. Inquiry is best limited to perfunctory questions of a factual nature. You don't want to get, you don't want to start blurring the lines, you know, years ago, I think there was a problem where we had commissioners that were directing parks employees about changing paint colors on light posts and stuff like that, that's getting awful close to crossing the line into criminal behavior, so. You get to review issues presented by the city manager to consider public input with the limitations that we've talked about. You have the right to vote on all issues, and the ability to appoint and remove the city manager, finance officer, attorney, and library board of trustees. Did I miss one? Which one? Oh, yeah, yeah. That's correct. Thanks, Charlie. Yeah, city commissioners should not give orders to any subordinate of the city manager, a violation is a class-two misdemeanor, and conviction also results in removal from office. The mayor gets some extra duties. The duties of the mayor are to preside over the commission, to receive the service of process and litigation, so if the city gets sued, you get to take the papers from the sheriff. If that happens, please call me. You get to be the head of the city for military and ceremonial purposes. And here's the kicker, in times of public danger or emergency, the mayor may take command of the police, appoint additional police, and govern by proclamation, to call on adult, all adults to aid in the enforcement of laws, and to call out any organized militia within the county to suppress any riots or other disorderly conduct. So. Got that covered, Nathan? Things that go south? Anybody have any questions? Go ahead and put this someplace where you can pull it out again if you got questions, it's kind of a helpful little tool, especially the conflict of interest stuff.
Thank you for that annual reminder of our responsibilities, Ross. With that, we'll move on to item number 10 under new business, and that is consideration of memorandum 18-140 regarding conflict of interest. As this is a discussion, I, Tony Mybaum and Amy Minor suggested we discuss this item, so I'll let them introduce it.
It can be tricky in a town our size. We work for various entities, we serve on various boards. It can be tricky sometimes to know where the line is, and so in interacting with Commissioner Mybaum, we were looking for language that perhaps would help clarify situations. Neither one of us are attorneys, so the question is, is the language that we were discussing, does that lead us to clarity or to muddier waters?
From a legal standpoint, I would say it's status quo, for the reason that the proposal here is, I, I think it was originally drafted from another community, but it, it's precisely out of state statute. So this is already the law that applies to all of the commissioners, but it's not even complete, because it doesn't cover the, the case law, the due process stuff that we talked about for quasi-judicial, you know what I mean? This is the state statute that, that governs all municipalities, however they're organized. So, and there's, there's no harm in it, but I don't know that it, it does anything... Extra.
It's redundant.
Yes.
Basically, we already have, we're already covered by the state statute. We follow the state law, we are obligated to the state law, and so it exists. I, I think there's something... I think there's something, you know, if you're looking for clarification, then you go back to Ross's discussion a minute ago of what is a conflict of interest. And I would ask you, again, and you said it, in a small community, we're all on boards. Does that render us unable to vote on anything? I don't think so. I think, as has been discussed earlier, in this same conver, this comes up occasionally, I may work for somebody, but do not feel I have a conflict. I have the right to say I do not have a conflict. Okay? I mean, I think that we don't need to add another layer at the city level. We already are covered by the state statute.
So, Ross, when you talk about the city manager's duties, right, enforcing our ordinances, since we don't have this language in our ordinances, are we at a disadvantage potentially?
This law is already binding on all of the commissioners. You know, the city manager doesn't vote for, you know, matters of policy. She just carries out the will of this board.
So, can you do a side by side for us then? And Mr. Mingo gave a great explanation, a commission meeting ago, about pulling in language from the state. And this was in regards to getting our, you know, city administrators having to have access to homes for a particular reason. So, that process was pulled in. Why was that important at that time?
Why was...
Why was it important for this commission to pull that language into ordinance in that situation?
Because in that particular one, the way the state law was written, it said, "You could use this warrant process if local legislation permitted it." So, we needed to have the local ordinance to take advantage of the state regulatory structure for those administrative warrants. In this particular case, this law that's on the books already binds all of you. As Charlie said, there's nothing wrong with it. It's just redundant. It just imposes on a local level the same thing that's imposed on a state level. Just the state one is more broadly worded to apply to any form of municipal government. It could be a five-member aldermanic form of government or, you know, a five-member commission or a board of trustees in a third-class municipality. It just says the governing board must, but in all other respects, it's identical.
So, then it doesn't clarify or muddy the waters, it just pours more of the same water? Okay.
I can, I can understand why. I wish I had a clear document to exactly know, but, you know, being on the commission for seven years, I've had many questions and I just call Ross when in doubt and Ross is even stumped. So, I don't, we won't, there's never going to be that exact clear as far as when that conflict is. You know, if you got a feeling, don't vote. But, one more thing I think I should point out is that if, if there was clearly conflict and I did vote and didn't abstain, then the, if I understand this correctly, the penalty would be just remove my vote. Is that correct?
That's the state statute remedy, although... Sorry, that's the state statute remedy, although, as I said, we have these constitutional overlays for quasi judicial and it's not that simple. The legislature tried to legislatively change constitutional law and you can't do that. So, the process works differently, the gravity is much higher. You can't just negate a vote on a quasi judicial matter. So, that one's key. If it smells bad at all, don't vote. But, we can talk, I think the better question is whether what you want to vote on, is it really a quasi judicial matter or not? Because if it's not, the line is pretty easy to find. Does it directly financially affect you or do two-thirds of the commission think you have a conflict of interest? It's just the quasi judicial ones, it's always better to err on the side of caution.
So, I know some communities have adopted a specific policy regarding conflict of interest. Are you familiar with any of those and why they chose to take that path?
I'm not.
So, one example might be in Aberdeen where they have a home rule charter and they were able to pull in this language and then go above and beyond it. Essentially, they're asking more accountability of their representatives. And just to simplify it, I suppose, it would be requiring their elective representatives to not even vote on things where in the future, they may potentially see some kind of pecuniary interest, whether direct or indirect. But, as I understand it, you know, we do not have a home rule charter here in Yankton. Call it a limitation if you want, but, but we really don't have much for latitude when we want to pull in language like this and then elaborate on it. Or, are there ways that we can get around that, whether in policy or otherwise?
See, this is really tricky because when you've got a statute right on the books, if you're gonna try to make, you know, raise the bar, if you will, the argument from a legal standpoint is that the state has occupied the field. They've decided how that area should be addressed. So, if you are trying to up the legislative limitations for when this group can vote or not vote, it potentially opens the door for litigation by people who theoretically had the legal authority to vote on this group that were barred the ability to do so because we created an ordinance that tries to trump state law. Does that make sense? That's essentially the idea. You can't trump state law. The question is, are you really trumping it or are you just adding to it? But, that's why we have a court to sort that out. Things would be much easier if this were home rule. In home rule, you can make all the rules and the rule is reversed unless the state has said you can't do it, you can legislate that way. But, it's a significant undertaking, as you know, to completely convert our form of government to home rule. This group could do it. I'd take it to the voters, I guess.
I guess, serving now for a little over a year, I'd be curious if Commissioner Minor or Commissioner Mybaum could tell me if, do you see this as an issue and that's why you brought this forward or is it just that you're unclear?
For me, it's simply a matter of clarity. I think I've only ever had to abstain once from a discussion and vote and that was in the sale of our tech. And I just go knocking on Ross's door and say, "What do you think?" And take his advice. And as long as he's okay with that, I'm happy seeking clarity that way. I wonder, you know, when we sit and discuss, for example, outside agencies and all of us are on those boards, is there a line?
So, what you'd be referring, what you're referring to then is the indirect personal interest that Ross referenced up there and that is under the quasi judicial matters. So, these adjudicary actions in which an individual's judgment may be affected because of membership in some organization and a desire to help the organization to further its policies.
See, this is where things get really hard because this is actually budgetary. The issue of whether you give money to an organization, that's not an award of a bid. It's your budget to spend how you will. So, that actually does not constitute a quasi judicial matter. Spending of money is budgetary. So, unless you've got a direct pecuniary interest, it's not a conflict. It seems illogical, but, you know, that's one thing where when you're talking about outside agency money, you could have, you could be on their board, their corporate board. You could be their director as a day job and that wouldn't technically be a conflict. But, politically, it's probably a bad move. You know what I mean? You also kind of got to worry about your spot on this board and what's it mean. So, my, my general mantra, if I'm asked, "Is this a conflict of interest?", even if the answer is no, I often will tell you guys, you know, it might be good for you to abstain just because of how this looks. And oftentimes, you guys take that advice. Doesn't necessarily mean you can't vote. It's not illegal to vote, but it's just, sometimes it just looks bad.
Define quasi judicial. I mean, that, that whole list of exceptions because of quasi judicial means when we are sitting in judgment...
That's correct.
Okay, so when I'm the, someone doesn't like what the planning commission does and comes to us as, and we have to rule on the judgment of the planning commission, that's quasi judicial.
Correct.
There's, you know, a limited number of opportunities when we are in that situation.
That peddler's license that you guys voted on earlier, that's quasi judicial. If they wanted to, they would have come, they could have come in and they could have said their piece and, you know, the constitution affords them a neutral decision to make. It affects their rights.
And so, yeah, there are nine of us and, and let's say even one of us inadvertently had a conversation with a constituent about this item, the peddler's license, it would be wise to abstain, right? I mean, there's nine of us. We're still gonna make a commission action out of this, but, but that's why there's nine of us.
Right. I would, I would strongly, it's really hard in your role. People want to come talk to their elected officials, but I would strongly, strongly encourage you not to. If you had a conversation with somebody, disclose it to this group. If you fell into the trap and ended up having an hour conversation and went and looked at a property with somebody and you pointed out all the reasons why, you know, his side should win, abstain from the discussion, step aside, don't participate because you've soiled your vote, so to speak. And the remedy in light of that is quite extreme. The state case law indicates that you don't just negate that one individual's vote, you have to go back and re-vote the whole thing. And depending upon where in the process that falls or what it is you're voting on, that can be a terrifying thing for the people who have a project that's half-built or whatever the case may be. So, quasi judicial is not stuff to mess around with. It's just, sometimes the hard part is just figuring out if it really is quasi judicial.
Are there any other questions on the commission? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission on this matter? I think that was a good discussion to have, you know, being mindful of conflicts of interest and how that may impact the work we do is important and I think it shows our, the level of importance we give to our public service and the confidence of the public that we With that, I didn't hear any direction we need to go with that discussion. So, we will, yes, Amy?
Well, if it's redundant, do we just remove it?
You know, if there is no motion, just go into the next...
Everything's suddenly so clear.
I suppose if we wanted to put this in ordinance, we could set that in motion and who knows, maybe in a year's time, we'll have a home rule charter here in Yankton, South Dakota and the language will already be there for us to expand upon. So, I would be interested in setting this in motion. I think, as Ross said at the outset, there's no harm in doing so, but I think especially because when people, you know, just do something as simple as searching municode for all of our ordinances, they see that this is an important component to our service that we are providing to our community. Yeah, it doesn't have to be in ordinance. That's right. It's true. But, the fact that it's there, I think, is meaningful and our citizens should, should be able to see that when they search our ordinances. I think it's useful language to have. So, you're suggesting that we take Ross's language and put that into our ordinances or what are you suggesting exactly? The, the language that's attached to this discussion item. That's, it's directly from state statute. It's not Ross's language. Does anyone else want us to pursue that? Moving on then. Number 11, under new business, employment agreement for a new interim police chief. This is memorandum 18-142. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
We have a motion in a second. Amy, could we have you introduce this item for the public?
Sure. You have commissioners on employment agreement for John W. Harris. He is the individual I'd like to appoint and approving this contract would help me do that as the interim police chief beginning July 1st, 2018. The length of the contract is four months with the option to extend the agreement if necessary on a base, month-to-month basis. Mr. Harris has a lot of knowledge and experience. He's had over 41 years in law enforcement at various levels, served in several large communities, one being Tucson, Arizona, where he worked his way through the ranks to assistant chief, which is a community that has over 1,000 officers. He's also served in Springfield, Illinois as the chief of police and a number of mid-sized communities in the Midwest and west. He has an excellent background also for mentoring young leaders. In fact, a number of his former officers are now police chiefs throughout the country as well as there is also individuals that he's mentored who are city managers. He has served as the interim city manager in communities where he has worked. His last full-time position was, I'm gonna ruin the name here, was with the city of Sahara Rita, Arizona. And he currently works part-time in Wyoming for the, as a county deputy to transport prisoners. So, he, his certification in Wyoming allows him to meet the requirements of eligibility for South Dakota. So, there is an employment agreement there with him to go along with him that we've negotiated for your consideration. There is a couple other dates that Mr. Harris has given me that are, he's, he has some commitments for travel. However, he has assured me that he will make that time up in the office. Also, I'd like to add that he, if approved this evening, he'll be coming this weekend to get a lay of land and I've extended the offer to cover the cost of a hotel until he and his wife can find accommodation. I didn't realize the housing situation was as grave as it is until I actually had to help look for housing for someone. So, I think we're working something out, but, so I've agreed to assist with that until they're able to find something on a more permanent basis. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission has regarding this appointment. I have informed the leadership in the police department, the lieutenants and the sergeants who were asked to pass that down into the, to their officers so they know about this individual.
Does anyone on the commission have questions for the city manager?
Amy, it's not in the paperwork, but I would imagine with his experience, we'll use his knowledge to help us select our next chief of police.
Yes, so earlier, I discussed having a citizens committee and he's one of the individuals that I would like to have on the citizens committee because it's important, I think, to have someone who can ask the questions that pertain to law enforcement and that are important for law enforcement. We certainly have a lot of qualified individuals in our community to ask those questions. However, they might be applicants or they might work for applicants or they may be a partnering agency for applicants. So, I thought it'd be useful, make sure we have some folks, at least one, who's able to help in that process and help me in that process and ask the important questions that I won't know because I'm not in law enforcement. So, that's part of the plan, yes, to have him involved and to help have some conversations with us as well as to things we should be looking for both in the short term and then in the future. I think he's an individual that all of us can, can learn from as well and just bring new ideas to our community just based out of his lifelong experience.
Are there any other questions? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. And with that, and I know we have an executive session on the agenda, but it turns out that we do not need an executive session tonight, so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Motion passes. The meeting is adjourned.